Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of February 24th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday nights, 6:00 in council chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watched live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The intersection of Southwest 3rd and Jefferson Streets is set to close today and will remain closed until early April. The closure is necessary for water main work and intersection improvements. For more information, visit cityofls.net. The city has partnered with the Community Blood Center for a blood drive on March 13th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Harris Park Community Center. Register today on the city's website. And Lee Summit Parks Recreation launched a free mobile app. Sign up for fitness classes, purchase memberships, manage your account and more. Get all the details at ls parks.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
So many of our past successes were made possible by understanding the multitude of perspectives in our community. When we take the time to see the world through someone else's eyes, we enrich our own understanding and foster an environment where everyone can thrive. When I see the renovations we've made to our parks, I see an investment, not just in essential infrastructure, but in people that builds community and directly impacts the physical and social well-being of our residents.
I see equity, inclusive playgrounds where people from all walks of life can come together.
I see a place to play.
When I see the development we have helped facilitate in our community, I see the results of solution-oriented decision-making. With job opportunities, easier access to goods and services, housing options, improved infrastructure and increased economic growth.
I see projects created through collaboration between the city and developers that will provide value, benefit and opportunity to the Lee Summit community.
I see growth in community and a way to connect more people to their food.
When I see the major road improvements underway, I see well-connected and safe transportation that enhances mobility and increases access to local businesses, spurring economic growth, safe deliveries to homes and happy trips to ballgames and activities.
I see improved roadways, added sidewalks and shared use paths for pedestrians and cyclists. Safe transportation and recreation for all.
I see better connectivity, increased lanes, less congestion and just make it easier to get around.
When I see the investments we've made in public safety, I see enhanced emergency preparedness and first responders who are ready on a moment's notice to protect the community and deliver immediate lifesaving care.
I see the city value its fire department employees. Come to fruition in recruitment, retention and a positive culture.
I see a community that can respond to emergencies quickly. My whole family lives in Lee Summit, so there's a lot of peace of mind there.
What we do is not just about making decisions and funding budgets. It's about enriching the quality of life for all of our residents. It's about realizing that a building is not just steel and concrete. A park is not just metal and ropes. A road is not just asphalt. And a city is not just land. It's about the experiences we provide to all people of all generations and backgrounds.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just the dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
This month's Council Member Spotlight is all about Mayor Bill Baird. Check it out.
I have always volunteered in the community and I was always really involved. But then I ran for school board. Whenever I got done with my term, I just felt like I had more to give. It's always been my goal from day one is to get everyone in the community connected and working together. And I always called it a spirit of community. Well, mayor's 24/7 and I have a job. I've had to work really hard at compartmentalizing, is what I call it. So during this time, I'm going to do work. During this time, I'm going to be mayor, even though I can get a call at any moment about mayor stuff. And so I've had to even work that much harder at setting aside time for myself or for family. So I like to exercise. I like to work out. Hillary's my wife. She actually goes to work out with me as well. We do like to go downtown to the shops. We make sure we maximize our time together. I've got two kids as well and we spend a lot of time with them or whatever time they will give us these days. And I have a dog. I think most people that know me know I have to have a dog. We have so much development going on and we're growing fairly quickly. So we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And sometimes we have gaps in infrastructure and we've always managed to get by. But with this kind of growth, we're really having to be creative and look at our options and just have a good plan for water, sewer, roads and more. If we want to grow the most healthy way, we need a diverse economy. We do have a lot of retail that's opened up here. And there's been new construction for retail. We really need to focus in the future on bringing some, you know, well-paying jobs here. Good, strong employers that want to be located in this incredible community of now 101,000 people. A lot of our workforce does commute to work still, so they leave Lee Summit to go to work. And it'd be nice if we could keep some of those citizens right here in our community. The times I feel most proud are actually when I'm in the community and I see the community come together.
We have Buddy in the house.
He's the mayor.
The tree lighting is always very fun. I always feel very proud. It's just a great warm feeling. The same thing goes for when the council will do something and we come together and make a good decision together. There's been a few of those that I just, you go home feeling like a winner. And one of them was when we put together the downtown Farmer's Market, when we bought the land. And it became real, you know, all that hard work. But also the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that was months and months of discussions and conversations that were really hard to have. And we went ahead and moved forward as a council altogether and I was very, very proud of that. And there are a few things that the citizens have done that have really helped us tremendously. First, in the middle of a pandemic, they passed a use tax, which is a way for us to collect sales tax whenever someone purchases online. That helps shore up our revenues so that we can continue to provide as high-quality services that our city provides. And it helps us take care of our employees. It helps us with our public safety and more. So I can't be more thankful to the citizens for that. Lee Summit has the opportunity to have a major impact on the economy in the Kansas City area. We already, as an economy, are rolling along with such a high median income. We have an amazing workforce here that are paying taxes. They're paying property taxes. They're paying sales taxes. They're keeping our economy rolling. And we really are getting the attention of all our neighbors. And I think that what's going to happen is you're going to see the opportunity for us to really get everybody's attention when businesses start moving here, bigger businesses and more. You should try to find a way to give back to the community, whether it's at the city level, you know, citizen committees or just participating in some of our community conversations whenever we have those opportunities. It's worth coming out of your shell or taking, you know, that leap of faith and just showing up and saying, "What can I do or how can I help?" The more that we do this together, the more wonderful the community is.
I got goosebumps. That's crazy.
I got goosebumps. That's crazy. Pretty good to have goosebumps after all these years. And he's going to take the seat at the end on the left, on your right. Welcome, sir, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And we're gonna call you, uh, we're gonna roll call you as well. So now would you please do the roll call for us?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hodges. Councilmember Rader.
Present.
Councilmember Funk.
Present.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle. Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here.
Um, Ms., Councilmember Carlisle says she can't get her vote cast open, so, um, if somebody could walk her through that, maybe. She's, she says she left the Zoom meeting because she can't get her vote cast, so maybe if she's, maybe she's restarting her computer or something. Just if somebody could, could communicate with her. Um, okay, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I do have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Hodges and a second by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The, the agenda is approved. Thank you all. Uh, and then I have a consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Mayor Protem Lopez. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does, uh, it is unanimous and it's approved. Thank you. That takes us to council roundtable. Items of general interest. Uh, things going on in your district. We were supposed to go to MML last week, which is the Missouri Municipal League, but it got canceled due to snow. So we did not have a council meeting because most of us were gonna be in Jefferson City lobbying our representatives and making brands. Anybody else? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Hodges.
No, I just wanted to officially, as a D4 council member, to officially welcome Donnie to council member in that district. I'm super excited to work with him. We met this week and I'm excited to have him as a partner.
Thank you. I'm excited to get busy.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that'll take us to proclamations and the first one we're gonna do is, um, Human Trafficking Awareness Month. So if you could meet me out front here. Is there anybody here to, uh, for the Human Trafficking Awareness Month? Usually I do the, I do proclamations, just for everybody's knowledge. Every once in a while I'll do one and can't make it, so we just give them the proclamation. But usually if I'm gonna do, step up here, usually they try to attend, so Marilyn must not have been able to make it tonight, so, uh, if you know Marilyn Arnold. So I'll get, we'll get her this proclamation. Um, I will go ahead and read it really quick. One second. "Human trafficking, whereas human trafficking is a modern form of slavery that affects millions of people worldwide, including children, women, and men who are exploited for labor and commercial sex through force, fraud, or coercion. Whereas human trafficking is a pervasive and insidious crime that violates the fundamental human rights and dignity of its victims, causing physical, emotional, and psychological harm. Whereas human trafficking can happen to anyone, especially people afflicted by abuse, violence, poverty, unstable living conditions, and/or social disconnection. Whereas increasing awareness and education about human trafficking is vital to preventing this crime, supporting survivors, and bringing traffickers to justice. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee's Summit, I do hereby proclaim the month of February as Human Trafficking Awareness Month." If I could have an applause? Thank you. Well, I know this group's here because I see them in the audience and every year I get the honor of doing the proclamation. They do a great job with this. It is March for Meals Month, so would you all please come forward? And I think, I see Susie, yes, Susie Newsome's here, Terry Kinsello, oh my gosh, you got staff here too. This is wonderful. Traveling packs. All right. Okay, um, we'll talk in a minute, but let me read the proclamation first, okay? So, "Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure amending the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. Whereas more than five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels and it's, and is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. Whereas this year Meals on Wheels programs from across the county, country, are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address feud food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Lee's Summit, Missouri, have served our community admirably for more than 50 years. Whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of the program and they are, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Lee's Summit provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the community that help them maintain their health and independence and provides a powerful opportunity for social connection for hundreds of seniors to combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas the senior population is increasingly steadily and, is increasing steadily and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. By virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Lee's Summit, I do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as March for Meals Month." That was a lot. Sometimes I bullet point the ones I'm gonna read ahead of time, but it was March for Meals Month. I wanted to read them all. And I get to go often to deliver the meals and I love it. And it's true about the connection part. It's not just about the, the food insecurity. It's also about the, uh, the loneliness and the interaction and the wellness checks that, that happen and the stories that are behind them. So 50 years is amazing, so thank you for what you're doing and, um, can you say a few words for us and introduce everyone?
Sure. I'm Susie Newsome and I'm the current board chair for Meals on Wheels of Lee's Summit. I want to personally thank Mayor Baird from, in our behalf that, for all his support, um, all, all the years. You've been mayor, you've read a proclamation for us and helped us celebrate March for Meals and we really appreciate that. Um, it's, it's this community that has, it's why we have been here 50 years. They've provided clients, um, as well as volunteers, um, doing many, many things. And, um, another thing I always want to point out, our first responders, because we appreciate you so much and we do have to call you, both the police department and the fire department, uh, to help our clients from time to time. And that personal connection, I actually saw something today, uh, that I want to point out. I, I walked in Aldi's to get some groceries for a friend of mine and there was one of our Meals on Wheels clients and one of his deliverers. She was helping him grocery shop and he was in his wheelchair and, and it was just so heartwarming. So the relationships and the, the care that our volunteers give is just amazing. Again, thank you to the community. Um, one thing that I want to point out that maybe a lot, some people don't know is that Meals on Wheels of Lee's Summit does not and has never received any federal funding. We rely on local grants, um, and, uh, personal donations and, and corporate donations from, from people. So we truly appreciate this town. And I'm gonna let the others introduce themselves. This is the Power Woman right here.
Uh, my name's Jenny Edwards. I am the operations director and I've been with Meals on Wheels for four years, which has flown by.
And I am Dolores Sinram. I'm relatively new to Meals on Wheels, but I think I've been here since Jenny, about four years. And last year I had the opportunity and, um, to actually have Mayor Baird come with me to one of my client's houses. And I got him, I tried to get him lost, but he had a much better sense of the city than I did. So, uh, thank you, Mayor Baird. Uh, my client was very excited to see him.
As had to call, um, for a wellness check for a client because they had fallen and she couldn't get to them.
Yes. And it was wonderful to have them be able to respond.
And Terry Kinsello, uh, board of directors for the last seven years and we really appreciate their opportunity. Mayor Baird, thank you.
Thank you. I will say that, um, they make it really easy to volunteer. Um, they, you can simply pull up in your car, just like a drive-through, take your meals and you are on your way. So if you have 30 minutes maybe of your, of your day, once a week, it's, it's, and it's really, there's, there, yeah, there's a little, there's a family of people that, that helps, so, um, and then I, I do want to know, hopefully you're keeping up to date on all the airport updates because there was one gentleman like six or seven years ago that really wanted to talk to me about the airport. So we've been really working on that as a council. Maybe, maybe make sure he, he knows. A lot of work's going in on that, so.
He was ready for the mayor when we knocked.
He was ready for me.
He was ready.
All right, a picture?
You were very gracious. You, you were gracious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
This is for you. All right, thank you all. That's gonna take us to our first business item of the evening. We have a public hearing, so I'm gonna close the regular session and open them, the agenda item 7A. This is a, excuse me, this is a redevelopment plan, an LCR redevelopment plan for the relocation and expansion of industrial facilities. T&amp;W Steel Company, Inc. is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. Very good. I see Mr. Peterson's here tonight.
Evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Kirk Peterson, 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri. I have the privilege of being before you tonight, having worked for months now with T&amp;W Steel, the company that we're here to talk about. Kenny Rush, the company's president, is in the back row, right here behind me. Uh, full disclosure, I always try to say this when this is, when this is accurate and true to set the table, was before you in December and this is exactly the same presentation, which I'll make sure is efficient. But just to kind of get your juices flowing, this is a reminder, we had a conceptual that was met with a lot of positive feedback from council. And then also, as is the normal process when you have an LARA proceeding, we go to the LARA board after that and we were able to do that just a little bit ago, January 29th, and received unanimous recommendation to this body for what's being proposed tonight. So with that, the applicant again is T&amp;W Steel Company. They currently are located at 1612 Southwest Jefferson, which is 291 South on the west side, uh, south of the Oldham Project. And they've been here, they were born here and they've been here just over 40 years. So they are Lee's Summit through and through. They've had such great success that they need both a better and a bigger space for their business, which is also good news. I will tell you with firsthand knowledge, they had, when I first met Kenny, they have multiple opportunities to go elsewhere, but we're looking for every reason to stay here in Lee's Summit because they've had a wonderful time here. And they plan to stay here and grow, uh, subject to this plan that's proposed tonight. This is a 28-acre site, as you can see on the screen. This is at Hamblin. This is south of 50, east of 291 South. Uh, the address, specific address is on the screen. It's located at the south end of an existing business park. The building that Kenny would like to construct is shown here on the screen. It is, uh, just over 50, 50,000 square feet. The incentive tool to make this happen, like I said before, is LARA. It is made up of two benefits. One is sales tax exemption on construction materials, which is the slide you see here. Typically walk that up, through that a bunch of times, try to put in yellow the key numbers that you can see on the screen. And then the second piece is a 10-year property tax abatement at 75%, which this, uh, table models. So you can see the actual numbers involved. This, just for point of clarification, is the same benefit the council extended to High Tech Solutions, which is in this business park, if you go to the far northern, uh, side of the park, then you'll see High Tech Solutions. And this was the exact, uh, LARA benefit that was provided for that company to build that building. Always end with reminding council of some really positive benefits to the city, to the constituents, as you consider on whether to support this plan. Here, we start with property tax. As you can see at the top of the screen, there's almost no property tax paid on this entire 28-acre site, $164 a year, both during the 10-year pilot period. Uh, and then afterwards, there's significant dollars that will be generated not only for the city, but also for the other taxing jurisdictions, as you can see in the numbers at the bottom of the screen. Other benefits to the constituents and residents, your constituents and the residents of Lee's Summit, job creation, we never ignore, right? We have, uh, now Kenny tells me, he whispers to me, and I'm gonna tell you a secret. He tells me that six full-time equivalent growth jobs is being extremely conservative because that's his personality. So we'll say six jobs over the next few years, but I think given the, what we're whispering out in the back, where business is right now, you're gonna see more than that, but for the record, he's saying he definitely plans to hire in the next several years, six new employees. Also, fortunately, he's retaining all of 31 of his current employees, um, keeping them in the City of Lee's Summit. The last two bullets are very much related, multiplier effect and sales taxes, just saying, look, more business creates more business and interaction with business, which has employees that are buying things, which generates sales tax. So never forgetting that the more business activity we have and workers here, um, involved, we're gonna be better off financially as a city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all have now or after, um, Mr. Bushak speaks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to Mr. Bushak and we'll be right back to you.
Good evening, David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I will start by entering into the record exhibits one through 10 that are in your meeting packet.
Please enter into the record, exhibit one through, with, uh, items one through 10 into the record.
So this is a request by T&amp;W Steel through a subsidiary company and that company's name is, it's the address of the, of the relocation. Uh, 1601 Southeast Hamblin Road LLC. That's the name of the entity. And so when you get to the ordinance, you'll see that that address, that's the same, that's the name of the subsidiary entity that T&amp;W Steel created. I'll start by mentioning that there are two primary types of LARA tools that the city has used historically. One is the certificate of qualification, which allows for up to, uh, 10 years of abatement at 100% of the increased value of the property compared to the starting point before the project occurred. Because this request is, um, um, a, is a, a unique incentive request. Um, they've decided to pursue a redevelopment plan and the request is 75% abatement for the entire project, which I'll, I'll discuss in more detail in a moment. Um, the project is, um, the relocated site is about 28.5 acres and the new structure is about, uh, 53,600 square feet, a new industrial facility to keep, um, keep the facility located in the city. So the first slide that I have here, this is the map of the, um, LARA area that the city council originally approved in 2014 and then amended in, uh, 2015 and added some property and expanded the area. And so what we said to the LARA board is city staff starts with the assumption that because the city council, previous composition of the city council has previously approved this as a blighted area, we operate under the assumption that the city council is still interested in using these tools in this area unless we hear otherwise. And then we did go through the conceptual presentation and I will zoom in here. I highlighted the property for you in red and the previous boundary, so the 2014, uh, area that was declared blighted by the city council originally kind of ended right about here. And so all of this property, including the parcel that we're discussing tonight, was added in 2015 by an expansion. So all this property down here was part of the expansion of this, of this redevelopment area and the blight declaration by the city council. And one of the things that I think is helpful to keep in mind is the public purpose of using the LARA tool is ultimately blight clearance. So by declaring this property blighted, clearing the blight is the public purpose ultimately for providing the incentive. And then there's other benefits too, such as economic development, expansion of the city's tax base, but blight clearance is the primary public purpose for using this tool. This is the chart that I have prepared to. This is the chart that I have prepared to summarize the request for you. So the developer's request, starting at the top, I, this is essentially a timeline of, of the project. So during the construction period, the request is sales and use tax exemption on construction materials, which the city has, City Council has seen on many occasions. And then during the first ten years, real property tax abatement in the amount of seventy-five percent, and the request is to use a fixed pilot structure with the projected taxes. So it'll be a fixed pilot structure that's designed to equate to a seventy-five percent tax abatement. The benefit to the taxing districts, the taxes last year on this property were very nominal. The city's receipts, tax receipts, from the real property taxes are highlighted in green. And then based on the pilot structure that's been proposed, the first year of taxes and pilots would be about twenty thousand dollars total, and the city's portion in green. And then over ten years, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to all the taxing districts, and the benefit to the city is about thirty-eight thousand dollars as compared to the nominal taxes that the city receives today. The value of this incentive request for the developer, total project cost, about seven million dollars. The value of the sales tax exemption to the developers, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, one point six percent of this total project budget. And then the net present value of the property tax abatement, so we do a net present value at six percent, and that's about six point five percent of the total project cost. So this incentive request is about eight percent of the total project cost, and as we've seen on many occasions through the LRA and using these type of tools, this is at the lower end of the range of incentives that the City Council has historically approved. And I'll show you that chart in a moment. The impact to the city, then, the cities, for the sales and use tax exemption, as you saw with Mr. Peterson's slide, this is typically around twenty-three or twenty-four percent of this number. And then this real property tax abatement, the city's portion of the real property taxes is roughly seventeen percent of the tax bill. So this number here is seventeen percent of the net present value of the property tax abatement impact, benefit to the developer, impact to the taxing districts. This, then, is the one-page, simple summary of what the incentives are, to make sure there's, there's no confusion. Both of the tools are through the LRA. As I said, sales tax exemption on construction materials, a hundred percent of that, and then these are the same numbers I just showed you. And then the real property tax abatement at seventy-five percent, using a fixed pilot structure, and the same numbers I just showed you. But this is the summary of the request. This last slide I have, this is a summary of the industrial projects, the significant industrial projects on the Missouri side of the Kansas City region that you've seen in the past. And as I have summarized for you at the conceptual presentation, and in other occasions that we've talked about, these type of projects, the original list that we created several years ago, before the first significant project that the city approved, which is down here in green, were all of these white projects. And then the yellow projects, we have been adding over the last several years, as other projects have been approved by other cities. Blue Springs, Liberty, Platte City, Kansas City, the Port KC, Independence. And then in green, you'll see the projects that the City Council has approved over the last several years, which fall into the category of significant industrial projects. And as we've previously discussed, the City Council has been active in this area since we saw that first project, the, the Skinnell project, that has been constructed. And then we get to the summary down at the bottom, the summary of all of this data. The average duration of the abatement period for all of these projects collectively is about nineteen, twenty years. The average abatement during the first ten years typically exceeds ninety percent for large industrial projects. And then the average abatement during the next ten-year period is about fifty percent, with some exceptions that can change that data. And then there's some other specific data about packages that use fixed pilot structures and so on. But as a point of comparison, this incentive request is a bit less than what the City Council has approved in the past, and it's well within the range of what we would call significant industrial projects in the, on the Missouri side of the Kansas City region. And then the last slide, this is our slide that itemizes all of the incentives that the city has, all, all the major incentives. I think there's a few projects that still need to be added, but all of the, the major projects going back to the year 2000. And this is a resource that we can talk about if needed, but again, we get to the summary down here. And the, the range of incentives that the City Council has approved for the last twenty-five years now is about eighteen point two percent. And if you come down here, you'll see the LRA is about eight point four percent with the LRA component alone. That applies to the projects that just have the LRA incentive, or the LRA incentive as a component of a larger package such as Oldham Village, for example, you, you consider back in January. And so the incentive request tonight at about eight percent is right within that range of what the City Council has previously approved through the LRA tool for incentives in the past. The last thing that I will finish with, I do not have a slide for this, but the city's economic development incentive policy, there are many goals stated in this policy. Some of the goals apply to, apply generally to any types of development, some apply specifically to industrial, and I'll just walk through some of these, which I'm trying to do more for your consideration of these projects. One of the goals is attracting and retaining targeted businesses, certainly businesses that are already in the city. Encouraging and providing business retention and expansion, helping generate a positive community image, whatever that means, to the City Council, and that's, that's expressed in here. But certainly keeping business in the city as opposed to having them go to another location fits, fits several of the policy statements. One of the targeted planning areas is the South 291 Targeted Planning Area, which this is in the vicinity of, and is in the blighted area that I just showed you, that the City Council's previously approved. And then there's some more general statements regarding, more, I'm sorry, more specific statements regarding industrial projects, and the policy statements that are, that are in the, the policy, and that this, this proposal satisfies, blight clearance, providing public benefits through the blight clearance. The duration of abatement, the, the way the policy reads is most favorable consideration will be given to projects where the abatement lasts no longer than needed to provide the minimum abatement, to induce the company to undertake the project, and it's commensurate with the duration of incentive packages that have historically been provided by Lee Summit and other municipalities on the Missouri side of the Kansas City metropolitan, metropolitan statistical area. And so this policy statement is arguably an exact match with what the developer's presenting based on the data that I showed you. Other policy statements, blight clearance and providing public benefits. Tax stabilization, meaning it immediately generates benefit to the taxing districts, which is the twenty-five percent that's not abated. Statement of need, the developers obviously indicated that they have considered other locations outside of Lee Summit, so this keeps them in the city. Most favorable consideration will be given to projects that invest at least five million dollar, five million dollars in total project costs for industrial projects. New job creation, another goal, job retention, another goal. This keeps those, the existing jobs in the city and allows for expansion, and would be a targeted business because it's a business already in the city that desires to stay here. Those are some of the policy statements that would be satisfied through this request. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions or have discussion.
Very good, thank you. Questions for applicant or staff? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bushak, I know sometimes you kind of preface all this with, I'm not for or against a project, I'm just trying to lay it out. So just to make sure I'm kind of clear, you're not necessarily saying, do this project, you're saying, here are the criteria that the City Council has told me that, that you want to see for a project, and here is how I see this project meeting or not meeting them?
Precisely. And I think my analysis and staff analysis of the policy statements is the equivalent of our planners in a zoning hearing explaining to you how it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, our strategic plan, in this case, our economic development policy.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, I don't know if it's really relevant to making the decision, I'm just curious what happens with the existing site? Does that just go, go on the market and stay on the tax rolls at its current level, or do they keep both sites, or what's the plan?
I believe at the LRA hearing, the applicant indicated they will just sell the property and hope, you know, have it stay on the market and redevelop, or be used for, for another use. But they could answer that question in more detail.
I mean, I don't need a ton of details, just kind of curious if they were expanding from that site, or just moving to the new site?
Councilmember Shields, Mr. Bushak was right, we marketed and sold, and another, either newly summit business or existing one will move in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions for staff or applicant? I guess the, I'll have Mr. Bushak. So we've got LRA here, and then this is just one parcel, so there's no PDP or anything like that. So I guess I would ask the applicant, was this one, this one difficult with regard to, this lot seems like it's been out there for quite a long time, and I'm guessing, was there infrastructure issues with regard to water retention and things of that nature? Do you know, Mr. Peterson? Because it just, it's, it's heavily...
Not that I know of. I haven't been intimately involved and been asking questions. I haven't heard of any real issues at all, honestly.
Ryan Neelam, Assistant City Manager. As far as any specific regional improvements or anything like that associated with this site, I don't believe we're aware of any. It is a planned industrial area, it's been a planned industrial area for quite some time. The roads were put in in the, I'll say, early to mid 2000s, and the property kind of sat for a long time. It was kind of a stalled-out development for quite some time until the LRA tools were, were utilized for job creation in the area to have it build out.
Very good. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Shields?
Fair. I'd be in support of this project. I think, you know, we talk a lot about wanting not just to attract new businesses, but to retain and support our existing businesses and allow them to stay and grow in Lee Summit, and I think this does just that, so I'm, I'm glad to see the tools used this way. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll just say that, that property's been there a long time, so I'm glad somebody finally is developing it and putting it, you know, to use for bringing jobs or keeping jobs. And you're going to have a lot more space over there than you have. You've got a lot, a lot of room to spread your legs compared to where you're at, where you're at now. So I'm happy for you on that matter. So thanks for, thanks for locating this and making it happen. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to add on to that, that we, we so appreciate you hanging in there with us and staying here in Lee Summit. And yes, feel free to expand and bring no, more new employees in and people to live and be here in Lee Summit. So thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other further, further questions or comments, Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill Number 25-046?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Number, sorry, I'm kind of froggy. Bill Number 25, I move to second reading, Bill Number 25-046, an ordinance approving the 1601 Southeast Hamblin' Road LLC land clearance for redevelopment authority, LRA redevelopment plan.
Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 25-046, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight to zero. So we'll do second reading next, yeah, I believe, next week, and again, thanks for investing in Lee Summit. Okay, we have another public hearing? No. This one's going to be, need to be continued. Yes, Councilmember Funk?
I'm going to refer to Mr. Head on this. Do I need to, I have already heard this application in planning. Do I need to step away for this continuance, or?
Not for the continuance. I, you don't, I, I would advise you not to vote, but I don't believe you need to step away just for continuance.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion to continue from someone else, maybe.
Do we need to open the public hearing, Mayor?
Do I need to open, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to close the regular session, now open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 7B, which is a rezoning from Ag to CP2 and preliminary development plan, View High Sports Complex, 3350 Northwest Ashurst Drive is the address, Engineering Solutions LLC is the applicant. Can I get a motion to continue? Yes?
Mayor, if I may, Ryan Neelam, Assistant City Manager. So after some additional conversation today, we would like to request the continuance to March 18th instead of March 4th.
Yep. Motion to March 18th. Can I get a motion to continue to March 18th?
Mayor?
Councilmember Shields?
I move to continue, Item 2025-6706, public hearing for application, PL 2024-283, to a date certain of March 18th, 2025.
Thank you. Have a motion to continue to March 18th, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. We have seven in favor, one recusal. All right. Whoa, does that take us to public comments? Man, who did this agenda? Public comments?
I've not received any requests for public comments.
All right. Resolutions. Would you read the resolution, Ms. Curry Fowler? Fowler, R. Curry, I mean? Still getting it wrong, seven years later? Fowler, R. Curry.
Either way's fine with me.
All right.
Resolution Number 2503, a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the Blue Parkway and Colburn Road Community Improvement District.
I would just call you Trish, but, Tricia, but I don't call anybody by their first names, so I have to, you know, make it formal every time. I have a resolution to appoint successor directors. I have a motion to adopt it, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All vote, yep, all votes are in, please record the vote. It passes eight, zero. Thank you. Committee reports. Did you get Mr. Funk, Councilmember Funk, assigned to his committees? Oh, he's asleep.
Yes, I did. Sorry, I got another one.
Okay.
We did.
He did get him assigned. So are you, are you ready to go, Mr. Funk?
Yes, I have them all on my calendar.
Very good. We're going to put you to work. Councilmember Shields?
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting of the Lee Summit EDC not too long ago. They're continuing to move forward in their presidential selection process, so hopefully we'll have an announcement on that relatively soon. Also had board meeting for downtown Main Street tonight. They are having their accreditation visit tomorrow, so working on maintaining their accreditation. And I am trying to remember what other meetings we have. We have finance and budget coming up on Monday, the third, 4:00 PM in chambers. So Councilmember Funk, you'll get to, to join us for, I'm sure, another rousing discussion of our budget and budget priorities.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other committee reports? Council comments? Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. We're still receiving a lot of communication from our residents about the Colburn Library situation, and I thought maybe if Mr. Parks would like to come in and just give us one, hopefully one more update on that, as to where we are, so if there's anybody watching and listening, they'll be up to speed.
Michael Park, Director of Public Works. So not a lot to update since the last brief we sent out to Mayor and Council through email coordination, communication, excuse me. Mr. Atchison has received a draft agreement from the library with regard to the easement. That's the one remaining piece before all the remainder of the work can be permitted. He responded just, I believe, on the 22nd, that he had received that, that agreement and was in review, and tried to get that back to staff as soon as possible with recording at the county. That's the update we have. So with regard to development projects, we are encouraging them, to the extent we possibly can, to expedite the work and the process and recording the easement so that they can complete the work, as I've explained to many residents who call either our office or Development Services. It's a development project, development design in accordance with the conditions of approval that the mayor and council have approved for a convenience store just west of the library, and it is developer carrying out that work under contract with their construction companies. And so while the work is being done, a little out of sequence, I'll say, and that's creating a lot of confusion and problems up along there, they can't complete the work in accordance with the probably sequence that should have happened, because they don't have the easements from the library. There, there was just a lack of coordination there.
But at, at some point, we will have that resolved.
The library and the developer are... The library and the developer are working together. Like I said, here in the last week, they've been exchanging the agreement with regard to the easement.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Rader, if I may just add that currently, right now, at this point, the schedule is completely controlled by the library and the developer on this, and it's purely between those. What we have been told is that they are anticipating, once they do start construction, it's a three-to-four week construction process, depending upon weather and things like that. But again, that is controlled by them at this point.
Thank you. And then, just to add on to that, about our, you know, the ways we communicate, because I've received lots of emails about the fact that we don't communicate with the residents in the city, and we do, and I thought maybe we might address that a little bit in ways that we do communicate with our residents and that, so that they could be more aware of where they need to tune in, or how we can better communicate with our residents, just a general, maybe, small discussion and...
Yeah, Councilmember Rader, had a brief discussion around that space, recognizing that all of you and many of us as staff too are consistently asked about what is the status of Colburn Road with the library. And quite honestly, I'll share a little bit of lessons learned, right? It's always good to reflect and say, what, if we were to do this differently, what would we do differently as a community? And so, you heard Mr. Park mention, you know, phasing of these improvements, and I guess, you know, helping folks understand that this is a phased project, and once the construction is completed, access will be much improved from what exists today and what previously existed, so I wanted to make that statement. But lessons learned, you know, we can, when improvements like this are made to public roadways and things like that, you hope that the phasing goes just as been discussed and anticipated, but sometimes it doesn't, and that's a lesson learned. And when we go into development agreements such as these, we can condition them to make it very clear that phasing is critical and they need to be taken in these steps. So, that's a little bit of a lesson learned with this experience, anyway. With regard to the communications, though, you know, it's, we discussed, should we put information on the city's website? That's a little sensitive because it's not a city-controlled project. So, we didn't want to make it look like it's a capital improvement project that we have full control over, but what we can do is help all of you communicate and use the council debrief that goes out each week. You know, that's communication that goes out to members of the public, as well as our monthly city newsletter, right, that goes out. So, we can put the information updates with respect to this project into those materials as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, there have been, during Royals season, my husband's a huge Royals fan, so we, in every car that I get in, it's always a 96.5, so we can hear the Royals games, but there's been a ton of talk about Arrowhead moving to the Kansas side. So, I just wanted to say that I hope that Jackson County can finally do something good and work with the state of Missouri and do all they can to keep Arrowhead in Missouri because not only does our city benefit from having Arrowhead here, but, and Councilmember Lopez and I had a good conversation about this before the meeting, but our airport benefits from it, Jackson County benefits from it, and not having Kaufman and Arrowhead would negatively affect our entire state. So, I just hope that they can communicate and get it done, so, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Councilmember Rader for those comments. I think that's a really good point about that project and also about the communications. And as you guys are thinking about what might be different in the future, I just want to say, the city website and the council debrief are great, but for communications for this kind of thing, like a sign at the library, like coming soon, new entrance, like whoever's job is to put that up, whether it's the library, the developer, the city helping them, but like, something big in the lobby, like here's what's coming, so that folks that are going in and out of there know what's going on, the people who are the most impacted by it, just, all I'm asking is, anytime you're thinking about these communications challenges, put yourself in the shoes of a mom with two kids who's running 10 errands that day and doesn't have time to look at the city website and doesn't subscribe to her newsletter. What can we do to make it easier to understand what's going on and that we understand that it's a problem and that improvements are coming, even if it's not a city project? But, you know, what can we do to help communicate that in ways that are easier for the folks that are most impacted? So, I just, I hope that's something that we'll think about for future situations like this, especially in really high-impact areas like this, not for every single development, but if the city is getting, you know, dozens of emails every day about a problem, maybe we need to come up with a better way to put that out there. So, just want to say that. And then, the other comment I had is a two-part. One is kudos to city staff and public works, especially for continued snowfight efforts through our last event. Was appreciated. I didn't, I think it helps that we didn't have a whole foot of snow, but I didn't get a lot of angry calls and texts, and I appreciate the work and the amount of communication that was put into that, especially about what was going on downtown, so that was great. And then, in a kind of half-related, I was just wondering if there's a really quick update on Green Street? And is, have all the snow days pushed out our timeline at all? Or when do we think, at this point, are we hoping to have it open? Thank you.
Ryan Neelam, Assistant City Manager. So, not ready to announce, say, a grand opening date or a grand opening ceremony at this point. We have had a few weather days with, you know, a foot of snow and bitter cold and things like that, but they've been able to make a lot of good progress on the inside of the building. And I'll say they're relatively on schedule, but we are looking at substantial completion for the project in mid-July at this point. So, but again, once we reach substantial completion, there will still be things to button up, things to clean up before we're ready to have the big grand opening. I'm going to call it multiple grand opening celebrations as we work towards that as overall. I will add that one thing that we actually just discussed yesterday was, we're, when we get into the spring, there's going to be a lot more of the, I'll say, the large iconic pieces that'll start to be installed, so we're going to communicate out kind of some, maybe some special communications when those things start going in, so we can kind of continue to keep, build those and have a milestone list that we're looking at too. So, there'll be a lot of communication continuing between now and the opening.
I just had someone ask me about it this morning, and I was like, you know what? I'll ask tonight, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one more thing. There was a piece about the Third Street closing on the news, it was on the news, and I just wondered if you guys wanted to talk about, that's going to be quite a, I mean, I know we've been working on it for a while, but it was on our local news, and maybe somebody wants to just bring that up and tell everybody how great it's going to be in the end.
Actually, on a couple of local channels and multiple broadcasts, announcing the closure at Jefferson and Third Street, and the detour route being Second Street and Blue Parkway to kind of get around. That full closure will last till, I think, mid-April, and then, the real work beyond the intersection all the way over towards Blue Parkway will continue under a different traffic pattern, where there'll be one-way directional traffic into downtown, and then, if you're leaving downtown, you'll take the detour around, so we'll continue with the one-way traffic pattern. But even during this time where Jefferson Street is closed, the full intersection is closed, you can still access every business that's up and down that section of Third Street between Jefferson and Blue Parkway. The entire project should be done, I believe, November is a timeframe. And we're kicking off, and I know there's been a lot of frustration, we appreciate the patience everybody has had. It's been a long two years of utility relocation work, all those utilities moving, some from above-ground to underground and consolidating with new power poles, and there's been a tremendous amount of utility work in preparation for this project, which will really just revitalize that section of Third Street, kind of extending a little bit of that downtown character out towards 50 Highway. You know, we're going to add streetlights and provide continuous sidewalk and shared-use path for cyclists and walkers and joggers, and carry those improvements and some access management to kind of clean up the corridor. You know, when you've got so many driveways, it just looks so cluttered, so we've done some driveway consolidation and work. And I'd encourage you to go watch some of these broadcasts. I think they interviewed probably three or four different businesses, and all of them had very positive remarks about, you know, the expectation and hoping this project gets done because they're excited to see what kind of new traffic it generates for their businesses along the corridor.
Now, the Browning Bed and Breakfast got in there, and they're very excited, and I don't blame them, because it's a real tough corner for their business, for people to get in and out and everything, so, yeah, anything that'll make our businesses more successful is great. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Sorry, this is my last question, but, so, I had an email today noticing that trucks were back where Oldham Village is going to go. I didn't know, do you know, I guess they'd cleared out their trucks, now trucks are back? So, I just had a question on if you, if anyone knew a timeline of when they were going to be starting.
So, with Oldham Village, they're, they still have, you know, some contractual documents that need to come back before the city council for approval. They're working through infrastructure plans and phasing right now, and I believe their current target, I'm going to kind of look back, is April, April timeframe to start with some of the construction, but they will be phasing that as well throughout there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the MML got canceled last week, and we still need to go visit our state representatives and senator. So, they have said that they're rescheduling MML for the 26th and 27th. I think what I was going to do is talk to our lobbyists about setting up our appointments again and trying to get them blocked together, and then, we can just make a trip that day for those that can get away. So, I will contact the lobbyists tomorrow regarding blocking it off, and I'll also request they not start us off at 9:00 a.m., so I don't have to leave at 6:00. But we'll try to get them all grouped together so that we're not in Jeff City all day long. Even though I know that the conference is a good thing, I don't know, I don't know how much they're going to actually do as far as a full schedule and such, so, they've not really been clear. Mr. Dunning, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, Mayor.
Are you able to go those days?
I do have my calendar rearranged to be able to make either day, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Pryor? You chimed in.
Oh, no. I think that was from earlier.
Okay. All right. Staff roundtable, sorry.
I think we hit them. It's like we're thinking alike with some of the council questions for the night. I was going to talk about many of those projects we just talked about. I would, I would share with the council that with those council goals discussions, next week, we will dive into the solid waste discussion, next level of that discussion, and then, I'm working with Mayor Baird to layer in those other topics as we, as we go through managing our agenda items with, I will share too with that continuation to March 18th for the Village, or the View High project. That'll be, that'll be, that'll be a pretty good meeting on the 18th, pretty lengthy, so we'll need to be prepared for that.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, we'll try to enjoy the short meeting tonight, then. So, I'm enjoying, I'm closing this meeting at 7:08.